All right, on to item 3.7, actions planned to petition initiative amending the envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan. I know we've got many members of the community who've been patiently waiting. I will call the community members first immediately after the presentation. Thank you for your patience.
Do we have an unstapled one for the overhead? Do we have an extra one there? I can give you mine.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I am back again. This is Kim Wallage, Deputy City Manager. We are here to present the required 9212 report for an analysis of the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative. I'd like to start by thanking the team that did this work. As you can imagine, when something unexpected comes in and we need to drop other priorities and put a top team on doing analysis like this, that is so important. It can be a very difficult, challenging situation, and the fact that it happened over Thanksgiving and Christmas holidays made it doubly tricky. But I want to thank Rena Brio from the Office of Economic Development, who managed this effort. I want to thank the core team that included Karen Mack from Public Works, Jared Hart from Planning Building Code Enforcement, Vera Tatarov from the City Attorney's Office, Amy Chen from Housing, Rebecca Ross from PRNS, and Ramses Madu from DOT, and Michael Brio from PBCE, and there were many other staff involved citywide who have worked together on this over three months. So Rena is going to make the presentation, and I just want to start by pointing out that despite the name, the Senior Homes Initiative, it's very important to understand that this initiative is not just about a single development in Evergreen. It is also about a significant citywide policy change, an overlay, that could bring development that previously was not envisioned to neighborhoods citywide. So when Rena makes this presentation, you'll see there's two components to her presentation. And last, I want to point out that since we posted our report, we have identified some modifications that we would like to make. And so we have provided copies of those edited modifications, and are intent to go forward and finalize the report after this session, and we will, including making the modifications that we are reading into the record today. So as Rena goes through her presentation, she'll point out where these are relevant. So with that, take it away Rena.
Great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative is a voter-sponsored initiative that seeks to alter the city's land use and development policies and decision-making processes to allow residential development in areas currently designated for employment uses. The initiative is a 367-page document that would, if approved by voters, make significant changes to the City of San Jose's general plan, the Evergreen East Hills development policy, and the municipal code. The initiative would also approve a specific plan entitled the Evergreen Senior Home Specific Plan for a 910 senior residential development on a two-acre site in the Evergreen area. The initiative also includes a new citywide senior housing overlay. Can we switch slides for a second?
Sure.
Oh, thank you.
Can I do it here?
Great.
I'll do it for you.
Thank you. The initiative also includes a new citywide senior housing overlay land use designation that would allow senior residential development in areas it terms but does not define as underutilized employment lands within San Jose's urban growth boundary. The stated purpose of the initiative is to address the growing need for senior housing in the City of San Jose. The initiative's response to the city's housing shortage is to find opportunities outside of areas designated by the city for residential development by allowing senior housing developments on underutilized employment lands. The initiative includes 60 amendments to the city's adopted general plan. These amendments attempt to exempt the initiative from adherence to the general plan in areas where it is inconsistent. The initiative's mere strikeout changes of the text of the general plan attempt to exclude the senior housing overlay from major policies of the general plan. These streakouts do not actually demonstrate the initiative's efforts to indeed be consistent with the general plan. Nonetheless, for the purposes of analysis, staff has analyzed the impacts of the initiative as proposed. The city has analyzed the effects of two major categories of impact, and the interdepartmental team in conjunction with consulting experts have prepared the 9212 report, which is attached to the item on this agenda. The city's analysis lists the impacts of the initiative and then compares them to the adopted general plan. Generally, the definition of senior housing community is a community where at least 80% of all units must be occupied by at least one person that is 55 years of age or older. In addition, the California Civil Code, Section 51.3, has a comprehensive definition of senior residents. First, we will review the impacts of this initiative's senior housing overlay, which we will refer to as the citywide overlay, and then we will analyze the impacts of the initiative's development project through the build-out of its proposed Evergreen Senior Home Specific Plan, or as we will refer to it as the ESH Specific Plan. The initiative's citywide overlay proposes this new land use designation that would allow senior housing on particular sites. It allows individual private applicants to file for general plan amendments to convert underutilized employment lands citywide. The initiative does not define underutilized employment lands, and for the 9212 report, staff assumes that the underutilized employment lands are vacant lands with general plan designations that support employment uses. This equates to 3,247 acres within San Jose that are potentially affected. The initiative also states that no jobs are lost citywide because it assumes that job capacity of sites affected by the overlay will shift to other areas of the city. The jobs associated with these lands are assumed in the report to be lost, given the magnitude of this impact, and that this magnitude would not be able to be absorbed by other areas through existing infrastructure or under current planning or environmental conditions. I would like to also emphasize that there is a potential underestimation in the report of what the impact could be. For instance, the definition of underutilized employment lands could be more broadly defined as, for instance, lands or areas where maximum FAR is not achieved on a site. In that case, most employment sites would be subject to the initiative, other than a few high-rise office buildings in the city. Let's talk about the San Jose General Plan. The envisioned San Jose 2040 general plan is a direct expression of community values identified and developed through a multi-year extensive community engagement process. The task force included 37 community members representing political, business, resident, development, religious, and labor interests. The general plan community engagement process included 51 task force meetings, 125 outreach meetings, and over 5,000 community participants. The community priorities placed a strong emphasis on promoting more balanced job growth, protecting employment lands, fostering fiscal sustainability, and focusing growth capacity into urban villages and near transit. There are 12 major strategies of the 2040 general plan that build upon this community vision and directly inform our land use transportation diagram, the goals, policies, and implementation actions formulated to guide the physical development of San Jose and our city's service delivery. The initiative's citywide overlay is inconsistent with four of the 12 major strategies of the general plan. In particular, strategy number three, which is on focused growth, strategy number four on innovation regional employment center, strategy number five on urban villages, strategy number six on a fiscally strong city. The remaining strategies, which are eight, are actually not related to the initiative. So for all the strategies that apply, the initiative is inconsistent, or the overlay is inconsistent, with the general plan. So there will be significant employment impacts when comparing the citywide overlay to the adopted general plan. The 3,247 vacant acres will support approximately 130,000 new jobs, and that is 35% of our planned growth capacity in our adopted general plan. The city's current jobs-to-employed resident ratio is .80. A ratio less than 1.0 implies that the city lacks jobs for its residents, forcing workers to commute to other cities for work. The citywide overlay will eliminate these approximately 130,000 jobs and add approximately 102,000 employed residents within San Jose, substantially reducing the city's jobs-to-employed ratio to .80. This is a significant reduction compared to the full build-out of the adopted general plan, which has a jobs-to-employed ratio of 1.1. So now I'll talk about the housing effects of the citywide overlay. These 3,427 acres could result in the development of 86,000 senior units with a population of 168,000 persons. The initiative expressly prohibits that any housing under the citywide overlay that gets developed, it prohibits these units from counting towards the general plan's growth capacity of 120,000 units. In addition, the initiative prohibits the units generated from the overlay from meeting the city's arena, which is the Regional Housing Needs Allocation Production Goals, and therefore does not help the city actually obtain or meeting these goals. For your information, the Regional Housing Needs Allocation is California's official measure of affordable moderate and above moderate income housing needs, and new laws have strengthened the Housing Element Law, and if San Jose doesn't meet certain milestones, there may be penalties, including eligibility for transportation and other sources of funding. As we will see in a few slides, the initiative also does not meet the affordability requirements that we currently have in our inclusionary housing ordinance. You can see from this slide here the fiscal impact to the city of the adopted general plan compared to the initiative's citywide overlay. What this is telling us is that the overlay will generate more expenses, services that the city needs to provide, costs to the city, than the revenues that it will bring in. In comparison, the adopted general plan, that is the build-out of jobs on these sites, will translate into a net revenue of $89.5 million. Combining both not realizing the $89.5 million from the employment uses and the fact that the city would actually lose $17.1 million in expenses to support housing through the overlay, it means the overlay would actually result in a loss to the city of a potential $1.6 million in revenue annually. So there are some reasons for why the citywide overlay is creating a shortfall. First of all, housing generates substantially less sales and business tax, but there are certain attributes of senior housing that do have an implication on property tax. Proposition 60 and 90, which is a state law, they allow persons that are 55 years or older in age to transfer their existing assessed value to a new home. In addition, the parent-to-child reassessment exclusion allows children to retain their parents' property tax assessment of properties if they inherit, whether they occupy or rent out the homes to other individuals. Based on our analysis of the Santa Clara County data, we have, and our fiscal consultant has reduced the assessed values associated with properties from senior homes in this analysis by 15% to take into account the trends that we see related to Prop 6090 and the parent-to-child reassessment exclusion. There are also, of course, increased service demands, which are additional costs to the city. Senior development requires substantially more services from fire, library, and parks. The citywide overlay's transportation impacts. So first of all, I'd like to take a step back and explain a little bit of our methodology. The senior trip rates that were utilized were using ITE, which are national standards for senior developments. Based on national standards, based on these national standards, senior housing is projected to have fewer trips during the peak hour than employment uses. However, I'd like to caveat that San Jose is an outlier compared to most communities nationwide related to the extremely high cost of housing and the average incomes of homeowners. Households with higher housing costs and incomes are correlated to have higher trip generation. So it is possible that the city's analysis, which uses this national standard for seniors, could be an underestimation of traffic from senior housing should residents of these developments not behave similar to their national counterparts. Senior housing, oh yes, I explained that. It's important to note, though, that San Jose commuters will indeed have longer trips through the overlay. And this is because by removing the opportunities for employees to travel to jobs, that will increase the length of distances that San Jose commuters will need to take in order to get to these jobs. So of the 3,247 acres, 58% of these acres are actually in ideal locations for density, and that's because they're both in, those locations are in both the city's planned growth areas, as well as within half a mile of high-quality transit. So by locating senior housing in areas designated for employment within these areas, it really upsets the balance of the general plan to support multimodal operations, and it's simply just not smart growth. So I would like to point out that this slide is included, the modifications that we have made to the report, I'm going to explain here, are included in track changes that are in the attachment that was distributed to council before this item. So traffic and greenhouse gas emissions and air quality are related together, and so it's very important to understand that if there is a certain trip generation number that's associated with the project, that will also feed into the GHG and air quality impacts that we generate as well. So what we've put into the report is, once again, the caveat, which is important, that these driving behaviors could be different than what is assumed in the national standards for traffic, and that if senior housing in these locations behave differently than the national average, then the GHG and air quality impacts which rely on these trips would also The initiative proposes to modify municipal code, Chapter 5.08, which is our inclusionary housing ordinance. It allows for rental units to be built, but that are not as deeply, I should say, it allows rental units built that are not as deeply affordable as currently required. Only moderate and very low levels are proposed, and no low-income units are provided, and the number of very low-income units provided are fewer than currently required. It also allows for for-sale units to be built without resale controls, and so without the right and proper mechanisms, those units, when they are sold, will actually be lost and not be able to be, continue to be part of the affordable housing stock that we have. It also removes the requirement for concurrent construction of for-sale affordable units. And without that requirement, it's a potential that all the market rate units could be built on-site without any realization of affordable units. So the citywide overlay adds residents to the city and thus has park impacts. The 168,000 new senior residents would generate the need for 504 new acres of parkland. Through staff's analysis, we've noted that Council District One and North and East San Jose would have the greatest park impact if residential uses were allowed on employment So the initiative states that it has a veterans' preference, it provides a preference for housing for veterans, to the extent authorized by law. However, it provides no implementation plan for this, and this can be problematic. Fair housing law actually prohibits discrimination by any businesses, and this is applicable to housing providers as well. And by giving veterans preferential treatment and housing options, it may actually result in the unlawful desperate impact if it actually excludes some protected categories such as women or other racial or ethnic groups. And generally, veterans' preference is only lawful when it's provided through a government agency or a nonprofit that has the explicit goal of supporting veterans as part of the organization. And given the cost of Evergreen senior homes, it's unclear how veterans' preference would be lawful to support the legitimate veterans' housing goals, given our substantial homeless housing and need for homeless housing for veterans. So now we're going to transition to the proposed development site, which is the Evergreen Senior Home Specific Plan, or as we call it, the ESH Specific Plan. So this is on a 200-acre site in Evergreen that is currently developed with two single-family homes. The general plan designation is campus industrial, and it's part of a larger 370-acre campus industrial employment area that is a major employment area in the general plan. It has a planned development zoning that entitles 2 million square feet of campus industrial development. The initiative proposes to replace the 200 acres of land entitled for campus industrial development and put in 910 senior homes. It also intends to implement the specific plan that was proposed and includes conceptual architecture and site layouts, as you can see on the exhibit above. This actually places senior units immediately adjacent to the industrial use, just to the south of it, which is the former Hitachi campus. And the initiative also exempts itself from the Evergreen East Hills Development Traffic The initiative's specific plan is inconsistent with five of the major strategies of our general plan. Strategy number one, community-based planning. Strategy number three, focused growth. Strategy number four, innovation regional employment center. Strategy number five, urban villages. Strategy number seven, measurable sustainability and environmental stewardship, and strategy number eight, fiscally strong city. Oh, yes. I should explain that there are areas where strategy number seven is consistent with the major strategy, number seven of measurable sustainability and environmental stewardship, in that it proposes some green building measures. However, the bigger picture of locating residential development where it has forces it to be not consistent as well. So this slide shares the fiscal impact of the specific plan compared to the adopted general plan. The specific plan will result in, or could result in, less than a deficit, I should say, of $31,000 annually. So we are anticipating that expenditures would exceed the total revenues that the specific plan would bring in. And in comparison, the campus industrial project would bring in a net revenue of $1.12 million annually more a year. So the net loss to the city of converting employment lands to senior housing would actually be $1.16 million a year, if you combine both of those. The initiative's specific plan has specific caveats related to fire and EMS expenses that we wanted to discuss in greater detail, and also are a part of the packet that you received that include modifications to the 9212 report. We learned recently that our fiscal model for fire and EMS services were based on some assumptions that actually allow it to not, to have a limited analysis. In particular, the model, the fiscal model that was used, actually assumes residential development, but not senior development, and because of that, it doesn't take into account the higher EMS levels of service required for the senior population. Also, it doesn't account for the fact that seniors likely spend more time during the day on the development than the employees of the campus industrial project. Modifications have made in the interim to the report, and we intend to do a rerun of the model so that we can present the results in the final report. The specific plan also will have significant economic impacts compared to the adopted general plan. So we've really analyzed this in two phases. First, the construction phase, and then, secondly, the operations phase, and it's important to pay attention to the dollars because they're all very high, but some are exponentially higher than others. So in the construction phase, which is the five-year period that these buildings, these projects will get built, the senior housing project will actually create 776 more temporary jobs than the campus industrial project, and that the senior housing project in these five years would result in $48.8 million more in labor income and $1.36 million more in business output per year during this five-year period of construction. However, when we transition to the operations phase, which is really the life of the project after construction, the campus industrial project will yield 11,574 more ongoing total jobs, and the campus industrial project will yield $1.2 billion more annually in labor income and $3.4 billion more annually in business output. So, related to the transportation impacts of the specific plan compared to the adopted general plan, we should note that the specific plan exempts itself from the Evergreen East Hills development policy, and that the specific plan may result in fewer daily trips than the campus industrial project. However, once again, the traffic standards that were used to calculate the trips from the specific plan, or I should say, the Evergreen Senior Home Specific Plan, are based on the nationwide survey data on senior developments. Many factors affect trip rates for detached senior adult housing, such as the average age of residents, development locations and size, affluence of residents, employment status, and vehicle access and accessibility. Given the higher-end unit types that are depicted in the ESH Specific Plan and the proposed development's location in San Jose, an area with especially high residential housing costs, the city analysis may be an underestimation of the automobile trips generated by the ESH Specific Plan proposal, and may, in fact, result in substantially more traffic than estimated in the report. Given that GHG and air quality impacts are directly related to trips, the senior housing's impacts to these areas are also possibly underestimated in the report. It's important to note that the ESH Specific Plan does worsen trip traffic in the direction of current congestion, and the reason for this is because the 910 residential units would be leaving Evergreen in the AM and returning to Evergreen in the PM, which is the current direction of congestion. The campus industrial project, on the other hand, actually benefits from reverse commute and internalization because those jobs or employees would be coming into Evergreen in the AM and leaving Evergreen in the PM. The specific plan, or the Evergreen Senior Home Specific Plan, causes significant LOS impacts at four intersections. So this kind of explains why you would see a higher level of intersection impact, and that's because, once again, those trips are actually going in the direction of congestion. And where those significant level of service impacts will occur are at Capital Expressway and Story Road in the PM, Capital Expressway and Silver Creek in the AM and PM, Capital Expressway and Aborn Road in the AM and PM, and Capital Expressway and Tully Road in the AM. The campus industrial will cause two LOS impacts, level of service impacts, at Capital Expressway and Silver Creek in the PM, and Neiman Boulevard and Silver Creek Road and Yerba Buena Road. Another important attribute of the initiative is that it does place limits on the city council and the planning director's authority. So the initiative limits the planning director's So the initiative limits the planning director's discretion to deny the Evergreen Senior Homes specific plan's subsequent permits. There are areas where the planning director may be able to do that when discretionary permits are made, are available, and certain findings cannot be made. However, the initiative does limit the planning director's authority. The city, under its current process, retains broad discretion to modify and condition permits to address a wide variety of concerns. However, the initiative prohibits the director's discretion to deny subsequent development permits within the proposed Evergreen Senior Homes specific plan boundary unless it does not substantially conform to the general plan as amended by the initiative. The initiative also exempts itself from many areas of the adopted general plan, and, as we mentioned earlier, is inconsistent and proposes 60 general plan amendments. It also becomes more difficult for the planning director or the city council to deny land use applications that utilize the citywide overlay because the initiative exempts itself from many areas of the adopted general plan that it is actually inconsistent with. The planning director can still deny planning permits that are brought forward with the citywide overlay. When those permits, like site development permits, planned development permits, those require appropriate findings, and where those appropriate findings cannot be made, the planning director will still have the authority to deny those permits. And any project that comes forward from the overlay that requires an EIR will still require council to provide a statement of overriding considerations, and that will be the city council's discretion to do that. So when significant impacts are identified through the environmental process that cannot be mitigated, the process through CEQA is to do an EIR and for the council in order to make that statement of overriding considerations. And the council will still have the discretion to adopt or not adopt the EIR. So in summary, the citywide overlay, which, you know, is going to affect approximately 3,000 acres in the city, from a general, from comparing that to the adopted general plan, it's, the adopted general plan's going to provide approximately 130,000 jobs in the city, will relate, will result in a net revenue of almost $90 million annually and will allow the city to have a job-to-employed resident ratio of 1.1. On the other hand, the initiative's citywide overlay will add 86,000 senior units, 168,000 individual persons, will have a net deficit of approximately $17 million, could result in a jobs-to-employed resident ratio of .8. It will result in longer commute times for San Jose commuters and also the need for 504 new acres of parkland. The summary for the ESH specific plan. If we see the build-out of our general plan, that on the campus industrial site, that would be 2 million square feet of campus industrial uses, 5,000 jobs, a net annual revenue of $1.12 million to the city, and through the operations phase, it would provide 11,574 more jobs and $1.24 billion more in wages and $3.45 billion more in business output than the senior housing project. From a transportation standpoint, it would result in two intersections that are impacted. Comparing that to the initiative's Evergreen Senior Homes specific plan, which will add 910 senior units, which will relate, will result in 2,160 persons, it'll create a net deficit of 31,000 a year because service costs will be greater than revenues received. During the construction phase, so that's the five-year period of time these projects are getting built, the specific plan will result in 76 more temporary jobs and 4.86 million more in wages and 1.36 million more in business output than the industrial project. And from a transportation standpoint, it will result in four intersections that are impacted significantly. From an affordable housing standpoint, it will provide less affordable housing levels and no resale controls, and the veterans' preference that it states is potentially So we've provided a lot of information, but we really want to hone in on the big points here, which is the senior homes initiative, the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative, will create a major policy shift away from the strategies, goals, and policies they have adopted general plan. It will result in significant fiscal impacts to the city's budget, and it will result in reduced employment and economic activity. And that concludes the staff report.
Great, thank you very much, Rena. Thanks to the entire team for your very thorough work. I want to call members of the community to speak, and then we'll return to the council for questions and deliberation. You know, Bonnie Mace, everyone has two minutes to speak, Robert Reese, Mike Flaherty, Mackenzie Mossing, and Bob Levy.
So thanks, Mayor. So I'm Bonnie Mace, so I'm a school board member in Evergreen, and I've also been on the general plan task force. I was a housing commissioner, and I was also a redistricting commissioner. So I have a long history with the city. So I'm the endorsement chair for the opposition campaign to this initiative. And first of all, I would like to thank staff for the superb report. It basically calls out all of the issues that we've been saying for the last few months about this initiative, and many of the members who are with me will, will say this. But I want to thank the mayor, the vice mayor, and all the city council members for being in opposition to this. This is one of the few times when we can all speak with a unified voice on an issue that really affects the community. And as Rena pointed out, the key issue here is that it undermines all the community protections that have developed under the general plan. It undermines the ability of neighborhoods to determine their own future in negotiation with developers. And most importantly, as Rena pointed out, it undermines the Evergreen specific plan as well as the general plan, which had countless hours and hours and hours of community input. So I'm going to let my other folks speak here as well, because I only have two minutes. But I did want to not only thank you, but I wanted to thank the more than 800 endorsers that we have so far in this campaign. Our website is StopTheDeception.com. We would love people to join us. And I just want to thank not only you all, but also State Senator Jim Bell, Supervisor Ken Jaeger, former Supervisor Blanca Alvarado, former Mayors Chuck Reed and Ron James, former Vice Mayor Rose Herrera, and many other leaders. We, in the opposition campaign, want to make it clear that we're not opposed to housing, right? We, we care for open space, and we care for affordable housing, and most importantly, and this is how I'll end, that we are a coalition that spans across the entire city, in every district. There are neighborhood leaders who are supporting us, there are community folks who are supporting us, we are a grassroots coalition of environmentalists, nonprofits, Democrats, Republicans, everyone together. And so we want to speak in a unified voice to stand up for San Jose. So thank you very much, and thank you to staff for the excellent report.
Thank you, Bonnie. Welcome, Mike. For Mike is Robert.
So my name is Mike Flaherty, and I'm a board member of the Open Space Authority and Chair this year. I'm very concerned about this, and I oppose it. The staff has done a great job in getting this information out in the way they have to show the analysis of what you have. The major impacts here are in all areas. There is no one area that isn't touched by this. I'm very concerned about what is happening with Evergreen and its policies over the years. This kind of development flies in what we tried to do to redirect industrial land to the Evergreen area. In fact, being from the Barriessa area, we have had major impacts over the years and non-growth in the business area. In fact, we have very little business industrial because that land was shifted over there. In fact, you can't even find a hardware store in Barriessa now. And so these things are very important to all of us in this coalition of people who understand that planning for city development, especially when we have so little employment lands, is critical. And we can't lose those because we lose the tax base which supports us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. And I'd just like the record to reflect, I know that there was a political statement that was expressed overhead that has been taken down. We understand and appreciate each individual who would like to express their view, but to ensure that nobody might misinterpret the city's conduct or actions here in City Hall. We know that was the expression of an individual. We want to ensure that we don't overstep any lines, particularly anyone who might be particularly litigious in taking photographs.
My name is Robert Reese. I'm the Chair of the Land Use Committee for the District Eight Community Roundtable. Our group is primarily a group that wants to educate the community and provide knowledge so that our residents can participate in an informed way in our deliberations and in their democracy. The District Eight Community Roundtable has opposed the Evergreen Senior Housing Initiative. I also want to let you know that we are under the area development policy of the Evergreen East Hills policy, and development must proceed very cautiously in Evergreen. Most of you were at the city council meeting in December of 2016 when we considered the Evergreen Valley College Land General Plan Amendment. And I want to let you know that the community worked very closely with Interim Director Huey, Councilmember Arenas, to have the council motion for significant community input and master planning of that site. On February 3rd, we held a charrette. It was about a three-hour meeting. We broke into groups. We had over 100 people there participating in a very constructive way in terms of looking at the destiny for their community. It's not going to be a cakewalk, but we have the stakeholders there, and we're working together. A couple of ideas on the initiative, it seems to be based upon the assumption that somehow San Jose has been remiss in its responsibility to provide housing. It's quite contrary. San Jose is the reason that the housing crisis is not as severe as it is. San Jose's willingness to be the bedroom community and provide for the housing necessary for the economy of the region to excel and exceed itself has been very important in terms of moving ahead. I think that San Jose historically has provided the disproportionate amount of housing in the region, and I think that if you're going to continue to do that in the future, which I hope you do, that the urban village concept and the environmental sustainability and the fiscal sustainability is very important, and that you're doing a good job in terms of moving ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Welcome, Mackenzie. After Mackenzie is Bob Levy, Gail Osmer, Daniel Reyes, Megan Maderos, and Steve Benetti.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Mackenzie Mossing. I'm speaking as a San Jose resident and on behalf of the Santa Clara Valley Audubon Society. Our organization is not against senior housing. In fact, half of our staff is over the age of 55. But we are against deception, sprawl, and subverting environmental processes. Our organization is opposed to this initiative because it subverts real environmental review, a process that we frequently engage in to advocate for birds and nature. And it threatens the city's open space and biological resources. The initiative proposers conveniently neglected to analyze any environmental impacts from the citywide overlay and instead only focused on the Evergreen site. Even then, their analysis is flawed. So where does that leave us? We don't know. There is so much ambiguity with this initiative that we can be sure the environmental impacts unveiled in the staff report are just the tip of the iceberg. We concur that the 3,247 acres of vacant land identified in this report is an underestimate of the impact that this initiative will have, creating a gaping hole of uncertainty. If this passes, our wildlife and natural resources will suffer, and people will too. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Bob.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. My name's Bob Levy. I'll represent myself as well as the Santa Clara League of Conservation Voters, and we adamantly oppose this ballot measure. We need to be very vocal about this deceptive initiative. It's really an end run around your authority and the public process. And I also want to thank staff on an excellent staff report. You did a very good job of outlining what these issues are. It is really designed to deceive the public and provide the greatest return for investment for the property owner. I was the planning commission representative on the Evergreen Visioning Task Force, and we took a very close look at the property, and they called the opportunity site at the time. And it was very clear to the Visioning Task Force, the Planning Commission, and the council at the time, that this property really needs to stay as industrial, light industrial, because Evergreen currently has a very serious jobs-housing imbalance resulting in incredibly bad traffic. And to see this go to housing would just exasperate this terrible existing situation. So this is really good planning. What's currently in place is actually very good planning, and to see this turned around would really be a disaster for the eastern part of the city. But it's not only that, it's that overlay. It's really deceptive, but it sounds great on paper. And I don't know if you saw the advertisement I got in the mail yesterday, but it's going to be very easy to tell everybody, this is senior housing, this is veterans' housing, this is housing crisis. And so we have to be very adamant about our ability to communicate what this is really doing. It's bad for the city, it's bad for its budget, it's bad for traffic, it's bad overall, and we just need to make sure that that's very clear. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Bob. Welcome. Welcome, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Daniel Reyes. First, Mayor Ricardo, I want to thank you for your report to the, to the city. I was glad to hear you and the many things that you're doing. I think that half-truth is a lie, and what this initiative is providing is just lies. I, I was able to help feed 600 veterans at the fairgrounds, and I'm sure by the way this is proposed, they will not be able to afford it. I sure would like to have seen these developers helping us feed the veterans. They have provided us with a service, with their lives, to sustain our liberties, our democracy, and I think they deserve better than this charade. I hope you can understand that this housing cannot be affordable to what they call low income. There's at least one instructor, one faculty member, and one administrator that I know of at Evergreen College that cannot afford to live here, that are lone people of low income. So I request for you to help us fight this to the end. Let your actions speak louder than your words. Please be with us this time, and I appreciate not having us until 12 o'clock like last night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Gail.
Good afternoon. I'm Gail Osmer, and I'm a member of the Santa Clara County Senior Care Commission. And as a county commissioner, we wrote a letter to the Board of Supervisors opposing this senior initiative. So I'm very happy about that. But as Bob said, we did receive this, a lot of people did. To me, this is just a joke, and it's lies, and it's talking about affordable housing and seniors. Most seniors are downsizing at this age, you know, 70, 75, 80. A lot of people into my mobile home park that are buying mobile homes are downsizing. They have big homes. Most seniors can't afford a million or $2 million homes that these people are, that they want to build. So I'm wondering, are they going to be bussing in seniors from Los Altos to buy these homes? Because most people can't afford it. Anyway, it's, it's very distressful. I'm very glad that the staff brought up about EMS and the fire engines. We have maybe five or six times a week come into our senior mobile home park, and I'm sure that's going to be a big drain on that community. And also, what makes me very sad is the affordable housing, which I'm sure won't be affordable, is outside of a gate. So if you are a senior and you can't live in the million and $2 million homes, I mean, what's matter with me? I can't live in those homes? I have to live outside of a gated community? This is horrendous, and it needs to be stopped. And I'm telling, representing seniors, I'm going to do everything in my power to talk to as many people as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Welcome. After Steve is Megan Maderos, Dave Pochel, Sean Welch, Hillary Gibson, and Mary Collins.
My name's Steve Benet, a member of District Eight Roundtable. I'm against this. This is another case where I turn around and someone's reaching deep into my pocket again. This group gets their way. You know, that 17.1 million is, is what lit up in my, my eyes. And that's going to happen every year, so that means we'll have less services, less police. year, so that means we'll have less services, less police, less money for the fire, and EMS, and all this other stuff. You know, we're getting stronger, the folks that are opposed to this. We ask that the City Council don't make any deals with these folks. We're reaching out to the whole city, and we want to run these guys out of town. Thank you.
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for the opportunity to provide the public comment on your long, long day. My name is Megan Maderos. I've lived in San Jose for 13 years and have been an advocate for protecting open space and building affordable housing for the past decade, both personally and professionally. Today, I serve as the Executive Director of the Committee for Green Foothills, a local nonprofit that works to protect open space and natural resources in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, and we've been doing that since 1962. The 367 pages proponents are sending to voters in June is an outright deceptive initiative. What worries me, as someone who works on land use throughout the two counties and cares a lot about land use in the state of California, are the developers who are looking to see what happens in June. Why would even the best of developers concerned about their bottom line engage with the community and work with our elected representatives through a give-and-take development process if they could spend less on a ballot initiative and get everything that they want? So for anybody here watching, I encourage you to learn more and endorse our opposition campaign by going to StopTheDeception.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave, welcome.
Good afternoon, Dave Pochel. I'm a resident of San Jose, and I'm also 55, so I could qualify for those of any age willing to live with me. If you are interested in your families, I'm sure there'd be room, you know? Places are probably going to be pretty good size. But so I'm concerned about this senior housing overlay and these underutilized employment lands. Yeah, maybe it's just going to be me and my dog. But at any rate, unfortunately, excuse me, like most Americans, I also drive a lot, maybe more than I should, and it's why our general plan states transportation mitigation improvements will be funded through procurement of traffic impact fee from new developments, except this measure would add the clause excluding projects pursuant to the senior housing overlay. But there is balance in this measure. Sometimes the clause comes at the beginning of sentences, except in areas developed pursuant to a senior housing overlay, comma, provide such connections between new development, its adjoining neighborhood, transit access points, schools, parks, and nearby commercial areas. Sometimes the exemption comes in the middle of a sentence, include street trees and sidewalks, and, comma, except in areas developed pursuant to a senior housing overlay, comma, prohibit gated communities that restrict connectivity. And sometimes it comes at the end of the sentence, prohibit conversion of lands designated for light and heavy industrial uses to non-industrial uses, comma, except as permitted pursuant to a senior housing overlay. Now, I've got about 40 more examples to go.
Dave, I'm sorry you're out of time.
Oh, yeah, I'm out of time.
Yeah, you are.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Dave, I'm sorry for mispronouncing your last name again. I'll get it straight. Welcome.
Thank you for giving an excellent presentation and to the staff, who I think give the background for all of our reasons for opposing the home, the senior home initiative. My name is Mary Collins, and I'm the President of the League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara, and I'm a member of District Four. So again, this is a citywide issue, not just District Eight. It's a fairness issue, and it's, I'd laugh if it was funny, but it isn't really funny. I submitted to each one of you a letter yesterday stating some of our positions, so I hope you receive them. Clearly, this initiative is a wolf in sheep's clothing, and the league is very concerned about it here and throughout the state. Under the guise of senior housing, happy communities, happy families, veterans, this measure would make major changes in the general plan, which the city has worked and developed And it exempts itself from a wide range of safeguards for the community and community members, for a healthy city, for traffic, for walking, for appropriate siding of homes. This measure overreaches to the side of the developers. It isn't a compromise. And it's not about Evergreen. It destroys the general plan. I don't think it's too extreme to say that. And this is a tactic that we, as the league, are seeing statewide. It's not just about other developers here. We're seeing this statewide. Santa Monica, the league had a similar situation and successfully opposed a development that was the same, avoiding the, you know, subverting the city plant, development plan, taking over the authority of the Planning Commission through a ballot measure.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. I have Hillary Gibson, Sean Welch, Leslie Hamilton, and Jeremy Barus.
Good afternoon, councilmembers and Mr. Mayor. My name is Hillary Gibson, and I'm counsel for the Evergreen Senior Homes Committee. I'm here to express the committee's grave concerns with the 9212 report that is being presented to the council today for your consideration at this meeting. And we're here to urge the council not to adopt or otherwise accept the 9212 report as it is currently written. What the city has produced is nothing short of a 400-page campaign flyer that's been paid for with taxpayer funds. It's far from the fair and unbiased report that is required by law, and the council must direct staff to correct it. We submitted a detailed letter to the council in advance of the meeting today. That letter is far too lengthy for me to read into the record, given the time provided, but in short, the letter contains over 20 pages detailing dozens of false and misleading statements and material omissions made in the city's 9212 report. For example, the report intentionally misleads and skews its findings by making the completely baseless assumption that a senior housing overlay will be applied to a vast number of properties citywide. In fact, the initiative only applies the senior housing overlay to a single property in Evergreen, and then gives the council the discretion to decide whether or not to apply it to additional properties in the future. This calculated decision to base the analysis on something the initiative does not actually do undermines virtually every conclusion in the report. In another particularly outrageous example, the 9212 report misleadingly concludes that the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative would reduce affordable housing requirements. The facts are that the city's affordable housing ordinance only requires 15% affordable housing, whereas the Evergreen Senior Homes project would require 20% affordable housing. This isn't insignificant, and this would create over 180 units of affordable senior housing for the Evergreen Senior Homes project. These are just two of at least 70 examples of false misleading statements and findings in the report, which is why we are encouraging the council to direct staff to correct these false misleading statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. My name is Sean Welch. I'm a partner with the Nielsen Marksmar Law Firm. I'm here today to put the City Council on notice that the late-added agenda item, which seeks to introduce a potential council-sponsored alternative measure to compete with the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative on the June ballot, is unlawful. Section 1603A of the San Jose City Charter expressly prohibits the City Council from placing its own measure on the ballot in order to counter an initiative for which a petition is submitted. The City Council is flatly prohibited from placing an alternative competing measure on the ballot in an attempt to undermine the right of the voters to have a straightforward up or down vote on a circulated initiative. The charter provision was adopted by the voters of this city on June 2, 1970. It was known as Measure H. The voter guide for that election, which serves as the official legislative history of this charter provision, makes its purpose and operation crystal clear, and I quote, "Measure H reserves the right of initiative to you by removing the council's power to place an alternative measure on the same ballot. The initiative is that petition process by which legislation may be introduced to council, and when the council fails to adopt the measure, it is balloted for your decision." To the California Constitution, Article 4, Section 1, "We owe the right of initiative. The first power reserved to the people shall be known as the initiative." To Hallem Rogers, "The citizen who proposed and ably argued the merits of Measure H, we owe the idea of limiting the city council's powers," end quote. Accordingly, there's no question that the preparation of an alternative measure here would be a direct violation of the city charter, and as would any intended action by the mayor or the city council on any such measure. It should go without saying that the violation of the city charter is an extremely serious offense, particularly where it is being done to undermine the initiative process. We urge you to reconsider and put a stop to the proposed action. Thank you.
Thank you. Leslie, welcome. And finally, Jeremy Barus.
Good afternoon. I'm Leslie Hamilton. I live in District Six, and I'm a former member of the Parks Commission and General Plan, 2040 General Plan Task Force. I oppose the Evergreen Senior Homes Initiative and applaud the mayor and council for taking a stand for sensible planning and community input. As Mr. Flaherty alluded to a few minutes ago, this measure would undo a conscious effort by the city 30 years ago to mitigate congestion on our roads and freeways. Land set aside for employment in Berriessa was rezoned for housing with a reverse done in Evergreen to shorten or set up a reverse commute for South Bay residents. As you know, we have a relatively small amount of land dedicated to employment compared to some of our more prosperous neighbors, and are the only city in the top 20 by population to have a lower daytime population. We need our remaining employment lands. As pointed out in the staff report, the initiative undermines the community-inclusive general plan process. If this initiative were to pass, it could set a dangerous precedent pitting short-term greed versus long-term need. Our city needs flexibility to grow and adapt to market conditions, and our residents deserve to have a say in planning and community improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. After Jeremy is Alice Kaufman.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jeremy Barus, and I am a District Eight resident. I am also a member of the Committee to Oppose This Deceptive Initiative. I am in no way opposed to housing. This is just a plain, bad, and deceptive initiative. I think the brilliant staff report really outlined the inconsistencies in the general plan strategy, and we all know that this initiative grossly undermines all the work, all the great community work that went into our general plan. This initiative is bad for the environment, bad for traffic, and does not guarantee housing for veterans. And the best part of being part of this movement is to see the broad diverse group of community that has, that we've brought together, and I encourage others to get on board. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Alice.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councilmembers. My name's Alice Kaufman. I'm with Committee for Green Foothills. I would just like to speak really quickly to respond to a comment that was made by another speaker with regard to the affordable housing requirement in this initiative. The 15% requirement that was cited as being all that this, that this kind of housing would have to comply with, and that therefore the 20% that they're providing is more, the 15% applies only, according to the San Jose Municipal Code, applies only if it's considered onsite housing. And the Municipal Code, Section 5.08.470, states that onsite units shall be dispersed throughout the development and shall be located so as not to create a geographic concentration of inclusionary units within the other rest of the development. And the Evergreen proposal that has been made here does not meet that requirement. Therefore, it can't be considered onsite housing, and the higher 20% offsite requirement does apply. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to thank all the members of the community who came out to speak today, and appreciate those who have been engaged. We are, and thank you also to the staff. I know this is a very substantial report and enormous amount of work. So what we have before us today is first, the issue of whether to accept the report or not, and I think clearly staff has suggested some changes. I would suggest that rather than accepting the report, we defer acceptance until we return in a couple of weeks, if that's the council's choice to come back in a couple of weeks to consider additional measures, in light of the changes that staff has already indicated they're proposing. I wanted to, obviously from the memorandum that several have submitted, I wanted to encourage my colleagues to suggest any ideas about additional measures at this time that we might consider, and we would, should we be, intend to actually place any measure on the ballot, we would need to do so likely on March 6th, which is Tuesday. I believe the deadline is just a couple of days after that, and so we would need to return on that date with the actual language of the measure. So I wanted to open that conversation up, because obviously, under the Brown Act, we're constrained, I am and you are, from talking freely, and this is our opportunity. So with that, Councilmember Arenas.
Thank you. And before I ask a question, I just want to thank staff for all the hard work, and thank you for helping us understand what the, analyzing and helping us understand what the impact would be to our community and to our city, to our general plan, and so thank you so much for working so diligently and so quickly to get this to us. And then, secondly, I wanted to thank all of the residents who've come out, and they're not, as you can see, they're not only from District Eight, because they recognize that this is not impacting only District Eight. And so thank you all for being here and for voicing your concerns and advocating on behalf of our community. My question is, Mayor, based on what you just said now, would we still be in compliance if we deferred this item, or deferred the acceptance of this report?
Rick?
Yes, councilmember, the 9212 report, the staff is required to present it to the City Council. You're not required to accept it.
To accept it.
I think the mayor's point is that staff has indicated there's some supplemental language they want to put forward as part of that report, and it would be before it's finally, if the council wants to accept it at that point, we would finally accept it. But the requirement is that it's presented to the City Council.
Okay. So I support that. Then I would ask for our colleagues to also defer comments and conversations until we, until that time, so that we can have a full, comprehensive conversation about this, because otherwise, our memo that we have out would, we would only be able to accept two of those motions, correct?
No, I don't think we're limited in terms of the motions. I guess what I would suggest is, and Rick, feel free to jump in here, but what I would suggest is this is an opportunity for us to make any suggestions that councilmembers may want to make if we are going to consider a measure that's initiated by the council for the June election. And then, obviously, I would take those suggestions back and within the Brown Act group that I'm able to work within, and the community be able to come up with some language for a potential measure.
Sure. So I think in, I think it was Alice who just mentioned now that the lack of integration of affordable housing throughout the, sorry, throughout the unit, throughout the gated community is one item that I think we should think about if, if we were to have any motion, any, sorry, if we were to have anything that we were discussing in the future, so that we make sure that affordable housing is, is not highlighted versus just integrated. So that would be one element that I would think about.
All right. Thank you. And Councilmember Arenas, did you wish to make a motion with regard to the remaining many items?
I sure do.
Okay.
I would like to make that motion. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. So that would be with regard to the memorandum that we've submitted jointly? Is that, is that right?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes. Yes, yes.
Okay. Okay. And Rick?
I just want to point out, just for clarification, the, in item number one of the memo that's been referred to, it talks about recommendations A and C as outlined in the staff report. That's items A and B in the, in the agenda. And I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So this is to the, or it's, more importantly, it's item B. It's, it's item in B. Well, item A says accept the staff report, and I think I heard the council members say defer that. And item B in the agenda is to direct staff to return either on the 27th or on the 6th, I think, which is in the memo, to adopt a resolution calling for an election, to submit the initiative to the voters. Just want to be clear that we're talking about the same thing.
Right. Is that, is that your understanding, Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes. So, so for this, for this motion, then it would only include, it would only include...
It would include C on the staff report, which is item B in the agenda.
And item B in the agenda, but not item A, correct? Okay. So then B and C from the previous agenda and then item two and three from this current memo.
Okay. Everybody got it? Is there a second on that? Okay. Vice Mayor seconded. Okay. So essentially, this is deferral of acceptance of the report. We'll come back on March 6th to consider any measure. Okay. Councilmember Camus?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for your memo. I had given out a memo late, later this afternoon after I read your memo and you were asking for ideas that we could put on the ballot. And I just haven't, I threw an idea together because I feel like this ballot measure came from somewhere. It came from potentially the frustration of people who want to do something with their land and haven't had success. And, and I understand that the, that many developers in the city are finding it harder and harder and more expensive to deal with all the costs that are incurred when they want to develop a piece of property. And so, so, you know, even as recently as, what, a couple of days ago, when we heard from, at the Silicon, State of the Silicon Valley, we actually had a presenter, Carol Gelenette, from the UC Berkeley. She was actually the Assistant Secretary of Housing in the Obama administration. She actually came out with, with, it's, with the fact that it's just getting harder to build, with CEQA requirements, with all the local regulations that are, that are, that are in cities these days. It's just getting harder. We have thousands of pages of building and planning code that somebody has to comply with. And on top of that, on any given Tuesday, even with planning approval, a project could get killed with six votes up here. So it's, it's a, one, one thing I didn't include in my memo was the cost of lobbyists. So, so I, I, there's a lot of things that are outside of the city's, city's purview when it comes to building, such as the cost of the materials, such as the cost of the land, such as the cost of labor, which is, you know, very competitive right now. So these are the, some of the things that drive up the costs. Other things that drive up the costs in San Jose are fees, regulations, conditions that we place on our developers, and zoning. Now, these are the things that we actually, we have in our control. And if my colleagues would, would oblige, you know, it's, like I said, it's getting harder and harder. So I put together a memo that basically outlined some things that I think would help, would help developers, people who are trying to help us build homes, have some kind of consistency. And I'm calling it the Home Buyer Relief Act. And basically, it's, it's in my memo. It's a ballot statement that I hope to be on the ballot that will, that prohibits new fees, regulations, or conditions to be placed on public or private construction projects that raise the cost of construction and compliance by more than 5%. Now, I think that's, that's the least, if our true goal is to try to build more affordable housing and more housing in general, we have to make it easier to do so. And I think a lot of people are getting nervous with all these, with all these new restrictions that have been going into place, new requirements, new potential regulations that are coming around. And I think this would help them ease some of that tension. And I'm hoping that my council colleagues will accept friendly amendment to the current motion on the floor.
I don't believe the suggestions around about any ballot measure are part of a motion. I'm merely taking suggestions. Yeah, so there's no, there's no elements of the, of the, of any measure that are incorporated in the motion. I'm, I'm taking notes. We're all listening. And then we're going to come back and make decisions.
Can I include this as my suggestion with the current word?
Certainly. Yeah, this is certainly a suggestion worth considering.
Yeah, so, is that an acceptance?
Yes. I mean, there's, there's no motion with any elements of any motion. So we're, we're just hearing suggestions at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, so I'm hearing it.
All right. Does that mean we, it's going to come back and we're going to discuss it? The suggestion that I've made today?
There, there are various options. It may or may not be incorporated with whatever it is that is brought back. You are always free to independently take an item to the Rules Committee, right, and put it on the agenda by March 6th that fits the conformance of 75 words or less or something like that. So if you have any concerns or doubts, there is always another path. I don't want, I don't want you to think it's ever foreclosed as long as you're timely.
Not to say that I don't trust you, Mayor, because I do.
No, I'll be very direct with you, Councilmember Camus.
If, if you're going to take it seriously and come, bring it back and discuss it and say, hey, you know, I thought this was a good idea, I thought this was a bad idea, and come back, then I don't have to do my own memo, but, I mean...
Yeah, I, I think if, let me put it this way. If you have a strong desire to ensure that what you just said is enshrined in a ballot measure, I think you ought to take it to the Rules Committee and take it to the council as standalone measure.
Well, I could do that.
Yes.
Perhaps by, by, well, it will then be too late then, right? Because it has to go through rules and then it has to go through...
No, there's time to get there by March 6th.
Okay. So I may end up doing that, but in the meantime, would this be, could I have you consider such language?
Yes, absolutely.
All right, then.
I just don't want to mislead you, that's all.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you for doing that. And the other thing that I wanted to ask is that the, you know, we're often, and I've had to do this before, where we've actually had to say yes to a measure that we didn't agree with, right? So, and just for the record, I've already gotten this answer before because we've had to vote for something that I didn't agree with. We are voting eventually, we'll have to end up voting to allow this to be on the ballot, the ones with the ballot measure with the signatures, correct?
That is correct, though. The initiative has sufficient number of signatures, so the council's choice is usually either adopt it or put it on the ballot and let the voters decide.
So, so for, I just want the audience members to understand that even if we're voting yes to put it on the ballot, it doesn't mean that we're voting yes, that we agree with it. And I think that that could be a perception that is, is viewed once we take a vote today or next week. So I just want to be clear, why is it that we have to vote for it? Why can we just say, why could I, as a council member, just say, I don't want to vote for it, to put it on the ballot?
You have a choice. You have a choice because you have a qualified petition, a qualified initiative, to adopt the initiative without going to the voters. And it then becomes law.
So my choice is to accept it immediately?
Or to put it on the ballot.
Okay.
So those are the two choices you have, and that's state law, and that's the power of initiative under the state constitution.
Thank you. And that's what I was trying to get at. I wanted, I wanted to be said publicly that those are our choices, to either adopt it immediately or to allow it to go on the ballot. And that's why I want the public to know that when we vote in the affirmative eventually, that, that it, it doesn't mean that we don't understand your points of view. It's just that they have gathered enough signatures and the only other choice we have is to adopt it immediately. Again, thank you, and I'm, I'm hoping that we can consider this and, in the deliberations as to what we potentially could put on the ballot.
Thank you, Councilmember Camus. Councilmember Wen?
I just want to...
Oh, yes, Rick?
And I just want to make it clear that if anyone has anything, Councilmember Camus, only because it came up and you're in connection with your proposal, to go to Rules Committee, it would have to be by next Wednesday, which I believe is the 21st, because we do not have a Rules Committee on the 28th.
Councilmember Wen?
Thank you. I thank you, Councilmember Camus, for asking the two questions, which still is not clear. I want to make sure I understand, so I need the city attorney to advise. When we say we will accept the staff report and the language, it still means that we are obliged by law to allow this to go on to ballot, right?
Yeah, the, the power of initiative is enshrined in the state constitution. And what's happened is there are sufficient signatures on the initiative that have qualified saying it is to go, it can either be one of two things. The city council can either adopt the proposal as proposed, or it can put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. That's your choice. So that is what the agenda item is, when I'm looking at the agenda today, B and C, of either you tell staff to come back by March 6th to put it on the ballot for June, or you adopt it today. So the motion is to come back by March 6th to put it on the ballot.
I bet you it makes for the third, the question for a third option, that we refuse to put it on the ballot.
You have no choice. It's essentially that...
That part, I want to make sure people understand.
You have two, you have two choices, adopt it or put it on the ballot. And again, that's because, that's, again, it's right in the state constitution, power of initiative.
So, so by voting for staff to put on ballot doesn't mean that we, we are adopting it. We just have to abide by the law and, and accept the process, right? With that, then I want to make sure we understand and the resident will understand now. I, I have a request to make to staff and probably to, to our item. You know, yesterday we also received the mail and, and I must admit, not only this, this initiative is, let half truth, very deceptive, but they are good on, on the other side of marketing and promoting advertising it. By reading that, the, the open flyer simply, I'm afraid a lot of people will, will get confused and will get misinformation. So I think, I appreciate staff went through the whole process, which is very detailed, correct, and thorough, but it's really complicated. I follow, I, it took great effort to, to follow through. So for, for, for working family who are very busy, don't have the time to listen and digest, just by receive through the mail, it could be flood, I bet you in the future, they, they will take it on the face of value. Here we go, housing for seniors and veterans, what's better than that? So I think the, whoever opposed this will have the works cut out for them to do the competition, to send a clear, simple message for the people to understand. With that, I, I, I want to say I thank you, even the proponents that accepted my request before. I asked them to come to my office and they did, and they were patient to explain to me what the protests are all about for my own education. And I asked them three questions. The first was, was it true that this piece of land was an agreed long time ago for the swap of land with the city that allowed them to convert the, the north San Jose piece of land into housing and that the other one, Evergreen, into industry? And I think the answer was, was true, was true. So that was an agreed. And with that, I think I had an offline conversation with our city attorney. And if that was part of the agreement, what if the contractual agreement, don't the city San Jose is obliged to enforce that part of agreement, that there was a, of the party that historically that agreed to preserve that land as meant to be and require, under the terms of that agreement, that we can enforce part of it, so can the attorney respond to that?
I'm not aware of any contract that exists in, or any agreement. I do know that this has been an area and the subject of a lot of discussion and debate. It came to the city council back, I believe, in 2007, and the council rejected changing the designation. We had some ancillary lawsuit involving a, an agreement that dealt with the city staff meeting timelines, but nothing in terms of changing use or anything of that sort. So it's a land use decision, is generally your decision, discretion with the city council when you talk about general plan or zonings, legislative acts. Here you have a proposal to bypass the city council by going to the voters.
Thank you. Let me clarify one time. So is, is there, isn't there an, any agreement of a land swap before? If somebody told me...
So for everyone's edification, on page 26 of the 9212 report, we talk about the history of land use and the Berriessa swap, as it's called. And that was a general plan amendment in 1980, which changed 300 acres in Berriessa from industrial uses to residential uses. And in exchange, changed 370 some acres of land in Evergreen from low-density residential to campus industrial uses. And so that's the, the contextual history of why we have campus industrial in Evergreen.
And, right, thank you for the information. I'm glad we got on the record for once. So wasn't that a part of a deal, agreement, that both parties supposed to be followed through, instead of agreeing now, later on, that suddenly one party changed it without the other consideration?
I don't, I can't say it was a, an agreement or in terms of an enforceable contract. I can say that if that, I mean, I wasn't here, it was before my time, but what it sounds like is that decisions were made to turn some land into industrial in exchange for other land becoming residential. I don't know of any, you know, enforceable agreement to that effect.
All right, all right. At least I got the direction. Thank you very much. Now, let me go back to the three questions I asked, and so that was the number one. Number two was the, the part of the housing, the affordable senior housing. And again, on, on the facade, we thought that the, it's going to be part of, there's a 13, 15, 20% of senior housing in part, integrated into the design. It turns out to be a separate, one part is the castle, then there's a mold, then there's a part outside with the apartment for rent that they considered that. Well, it was education for me, but that was explanation, I accept, that's a very, very smart design, that they can go around using the definition, but yet it's defined separately. You poor people who run the apartment outside of the community and only people who qualify to buy big houses on this area. But then, but then the third and the most important question was, by the direction was the, the road that leads to that area is airborne, is airborne to Quimby, airborne, one road in. And that was one way in and out. And I, and the discussion was the Evergreen people right now, as of now, really suffer very, very heavy traffic congestion. I believe my colleague, a council member, arranges complaints about some time from that area goes here, takes an hour to work with, as it is. And when I asked whether there's a way up to relieve the traffic or develop another exit route, and the answer was simply no. We just built under 2,000 because elderly people don't drive. That was a simple assumption. That was a simple assumption. Well, so therefore, first of all, thank you for your time, and that was my understanding of it. I think, I'm afraid, at this rate, from the community that I've talked to so far, I have my own very hard time to convey the knowledge, the concern to them, given the little time and energy that they have and the reality that we need housing, right? So I just run my concern to this, and I really thank staff and thank council. You make your action, but reality is there. And to really make sure that everybody fairly treated. But I really look forward to have the correct information, the needed correct information impact to the city, to the residents, and to the bottom of the city, to make sure our voters be aware and know what they will vote for in June. So with that, I wish you luck, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wen. Councilmember Rocha?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. One question for staff and then another more in terms of the process. So looking at the presentation and then the report, I think it's page 119. This is the VMT heat map. And I appreciate this is somewhat of a new one for you. Hope you can appreciate this for me as well in trying to understand this. So the evergreen site is located in the area that's in red on the VMT map. So when we think of the evergreen site, this is an ideal location for density. So when the red, we're thinking we want density. Forgive me, I'm confused because I know we've talked about this before. And I'm trying to reconcile between the two concepts here. And maybe I'm misreading this or misunderstanding.
Sure, I'll do a brief explanation as I understand it, and then Ramza Smadu might follow up, depending on if there's more need for elaboration. So you're absolutely right. On the heat map, red is not, is an area that will have higher than our regional averages for VMT. So in theory, there are areas where there is going to be more trips, less access to transit. When I referred in the presentation to the fact that the overlay, 58% of the 3,227 acres were in areas that are ideal for high density, that's, that didn't necessarily include this area because it's not near transit. But related to the other remaining acres, about, you know, over half of those acres were in areas that were in PDAs, which is where we've planned our growth, and also within half a mile of transit. So the map does illustrate that evergreen in general, from a VMT standpoint, is not, you know, has a very high VMT standard.
So, so then it generates high VMT? So, okay, got it.
Correct.
Was there more? I'm sorry, you mentioned?
I'll add just a little bit, that the colors are coded to the actual language of the proposed policy, which in this case merely means the red means you can't mitigate the VMT in that area without an override.
Okay.
Or you wouldn't be able, or you wouldn't be able to go forward without an override.
Without an override, got it. Thank you very much. So then I guess my other question, I think, is more in terms of the next steps. And as I understand it, again, not having the privilege of serving on the Rules Committee, understanding how this agenda item is written in the A, B, C, D concept, where D is asking for us to discuss principles and elements of potential city-sponsored ballot measures. We've also had some past direction on other ballot measures, such as the park bond. And is this date in March the deadline for us to give direction and move forward on any ballot measure? To clarify.
And I think to the extent you want anything to go on the June 5th ballot, March 6th is it, because the deadline's March 9th.
So then am I to assume that staff's not working on anything else at this stage?
I don't know if there's, I don't believe there's anything for the June ballot. I think there's a lot of discussion about November ballot for other measures.
Did you want to add anything?
Yes, sure. Lee Wilcox, Chief of Staff, City Manager's Office. We are working with parks right now on a second round of polling. We are targeting possibly a November election of this year, so we would not be needing to make a decision in March.
So wouldn't that be the council's decision? Whether or not to proceed in June or November?
That is a policy call, I will say, from a staff perspective and the amount of work that would need to happen. We would be much more comfortable with additional rounds of polling to put something in front of you that would be a feasible choice. And we think that's a better option in August.
Yeah, maybe if I could jump in as well. There's been a lot of, Parks Department's actually hired a consultant. Consultant's strong advice was if we go, we go in November, both because of what they see in the polling and because what we know about November elections and turnout.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'm just a little bit at a loss as usually you find out before that rather than the day or a deadline. So we could make a decision rather than just be beholden to the decision, given all the obvious factors I'm hearing, which makes sense, but...
And certainly, it doesn't stop anybody in the council from submitting a memo to Rules and go, you know, bring it to us in March if you really want to go. And we can definitely have that conversation.
Understood, Mayor. But I've also been under the impression that we're looking at both, so I wouldn't have done that.
Yeah.
Assuming staff was doing the work to provide that analysis on whether they were recommending to go forward in June or November. And again, whatever is best, I'm comfortable with. Again, this is the first I've heard of it, and it sounded like it was a decision that was already made. The second question I had as far as the staff analysis, so if we are to provide ideas right now, it sounds like there's only been one idea. What's the professional analysis that's going to happen as a result of this? I don't know. When you say you're going to go back with your Brown Act team, is there a professional analysis that's going to happen? Or is this going to be one made at the elected level of what initiative we should pursue, or any initiative we should pursue?
Yeah, it's fair to say we're talking to people in the community. We're talking to experts, including legal experts, to ensure that whatever is proposed is something that will be legally valid.
So then, using the example of my colleagues, but you didn't include professional staff in that. So city staff's not going to be involved in vetting out these ideas?
Only if they want to volunteer their time, that is. We certainly have talked to the city attorney about legal issues. And when we have particular questions about a particular issue in planning or whatever, we raise questions like any of us would. But the work that needs to be done needs to be done by folks not at City Hall.
Even Councilmember Camus's recommendation?
No, by that, obviously, we are political actors. We can do the work whenever we want to do it.
Yeah. But again, when he suggested this, I would just like to know what the potential impacts of that are. So is city staff going to potentially look at that? Or is this going to be you looking at this, Mayor? I don't know who's doing the analysis.
You're talking about if Councilmember Camus proposes something next week at Rules?
He did, well, the one that he just suggested.
Right. So presumably, he might draft something.
Yeah.
Bring it to all of us March 6th. I would imagine staff might have an opinion about it. Our city attorney might have an opinion about it and express those opinions, and we'd all decide what we want to do.
But we wouldn't have time for any professional analysis from staff. We would just be putting an initiative on the ballot, assuming we all think it's a good idea.
There would not be an enormous amount of time for that kind of analysis.
Or public outreach.
Correct.
Okay.
All right, Rick?
Yeah, let me, let me just also qualify. Anything that is to go on the ballot, we're going to have to take a stab at proposing the 75-ballot word, or the 75-word ballot measure. So the one that goes on the ballot that says shall, da-da-da-da-da-da, that will be, have to be prepared by us. And to the extent we receive something, you know, that we might significantly have to edit anything because that would then come to the council for consideration. But there's not a lot of time, I think, is your point. And so we want to make sure that whatever's before the council is clean. So we will have the opportunity to at least review and propose that language because the time is short.
Thank you. Okay, other questions or comments? Let me just, Rick?
I do want to just say for the record, though, I think it's important. There were a couple of comments from council for the developers on this item. And the one that's the charter, you know, we're not looking at an alternative. Well, he spoke about a measure, but the actual language in the charter is alternative ordinance. And so I don't think that's something that we've been talking about. And we're quite familiar with that. The second issue is the comments about the report, the staff report, and being a political document. I think this is, staff has done, sort of gone above and beyond. It's a very professionally written report that intends to, or attempts to, talk about the impacts or potential impacts. To the comment that a rebuttal was submitted, I want to get on the record that that was received five minutes before this meeting started. So we have not even had a chance to go through anything more than the cover letter. So just to get that, make sure that's clear.
Thanks, Rick, for that clarification. Obviously, I've expressed my own strong personal views about this. I think this is an initiative by developers that attempts to deceive the public into believing that they're providing, or developers are providing affordable housing for seniors and veterans, and they're actually building a gated community for the wealthy and the evergreen foothills. And they're unwilling to play by the same rules that every other, by which every other home builder must abide. And they're ducking our affordable housing requirements, our public outreach requirements, our traffic mitigation requirements, and all the rules that every other home builder has to obey. So I certainly understand the concern that Councilmember Camus has about voting to put something on the ballot that you don't believe in. This is what the charter has charged us with. Nonetheless, that's what we'll be doing. And then certainly, outside of our time at City Hall, we can express ourselves freely as we can under the First Amendment.
Okay, any other comments before we take a vote on the motion? All right, let's vote. All right, that measure passes?